We're ready, Mayor.
The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is six P M. This meeting is, will be held in accordance with the Governor's new executive order N twenty-nine twenty, issued on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty regarding the open meeting requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act California Government Code, Section five four nine five zero at the S A and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, in an effort to help avoid the spread of COVID nineteen, to maximize transparency and provide public access to the city council meeting. This time we'll start with a flag salute. Everyone, please cover your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Four Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda. At this time, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, the first item is item one point one, a proclamation for code enforcement officer appreciation week. This time I will read the proclamation. Anyone want to receive it? Donna?
Yes, sir.
All right, you have it. City of Riverbank Proclamation, National Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as code enforcement officer appreciation week, and whereas code enforcement officers protect the community's safety, health, and welfare through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances, and whereas the code enforcement officers are highly dedicated, qualified, and trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities' insurance safety, and preserving property values. And whereas in their capacity, code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the City of Riverbank, regularly interacting with the public and with a variety of federal, state, and local officials to achieve fair and expedient resolutions, and whereas the City of Riverbank is proud to recognize and honor the city neighborhoods improvement officers who serve as the code enforcement officers, leading the way to improve and maintain the quality of our life in, on our community. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaims the second week of October, two thousand and twenty, to be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Riverbank, and calls upon the residents to join in in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for their dedication and service. Signed today, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. And at this time, there is a lot of uncertainty about code enforcement's going on into an establishment and asking them to comply with some of the local and some of the state laws such as COVID nineteen. And I've experienced some of that hostility, and I'm sure those code enforcement officers experience it in much greater detail. So I truly appreciate what they do. Just continue and keep looking at the neighborhoods for the constant improvements that must be made to the neighborhoods. Is there anyone from the council wishing to express any thoughts on the presentation?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'll just keep it brief. Yeah, we appreciate all the quality of life issues that are improved or improved because of the hard work that code enforcement does. Your work is not overlooked, and we thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. This is Darlene Barbara Martinez, and our code enforcement staff is small, but they do a lot of great work. So I just want to say thank you for the things that you do for the city.
I would just like to say, Councilmember Campbell, that they've done a lot in my neighborhood, in my areas, in streets away from me, and I appreciate everything they've done to help clean up our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey, and I want to reiterate everything that everyone said and just say thank you for a good job done every day. Thank you.
And although this is an appreciation for one week, it is not just an appreciation for the week. It is appreciation for the year. Thank you all. Item one point two, progress update on the development of the city bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
So this item is something that Kathleen's department has spearheaded, and she's going to introduce our consultants on the line here with us. But just know that the process started right before COVID happened, and so it's changed it a little, but a lot of good work has still been able to get done, as you're going to hear tonight, and Kathleen can, you can take it away.
Yeah, and to reiterate, this is Kathleen Clink with Development Services Administration Manager. And just to reiterate what Sean said, we would have been coming to you a lot earlier than today, but due to COVID, you know, we were taking our time. We want to make sure that we get out to the public and we get as much information as we can before we actually, you know, finalize and put something together. So with that said, October of last year, Alter Planning Design was awarded the contract to assist the city in developing a bike and pedestrian master plan. So tonight Otto's going to give you a progress update on where we actually are right now with that plan. So Otto, go ahead and take it away.
Great. Thanks, Kathleen. I will share my presentation right now. Okay. So hello, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Otto Malara. I am a planning consultant with Alter Planning and Design. I'm based out of Sacramento, and we focus on active transportation, which is exactly what this plan is about. It's about active transportation for the City of Riverbank, creating a vision for bicyclists and pedestrian network experience and safety of Riverbank and its citizens. So the active transportation plan, you know, what it really will do is it'll help Riverbank plan for future walking and biking improvements. And my improvements, we need projects, and those projects will be geared towards making and creating a safe and connected network of bikeways, walkways, trails throughout the city, but also thinking, you know, beyond city limits and how this network connects to neighboring networks, neighboring cities, and sometimes even kind of the broader, broader picture. So for my presentation, I'll make it quick. You know, it's going to be about ten minutes or so. And, you know, I want to present the goals of this plan and kind of timeline. Then we want to really get into some existing conditions and what we have assessed so far, all the work that we've put into this so far, and how the public outreach has helped shape our analysis as well. And then we want to get into a little bit about what we've done to solicit input and feedback from the public, which is very important for a plan like this, and how that will and has led to draft recommendations. And then, of course, you know, the next steps, like where do we go from here? So just, you know, really quickly at a high level, the goals of this plan are definitely to develop a vision for walking and biking in Riverbank and a vision that delivers a safe and connected network for users of all types, whether you are a child going to school, whether you are an avid cyclist, whether you are a mom using a stroller with, you know, on playdates, walking around the neighborhood, or whether you are a commuter who bikes to a transit station to get to Modesto or to get to anywhere else. It's really creating a vision for everyone across the board, regardless of your age or ability. Then we also want to engage with community members, with citizen advisory team that we put together, and all other stakeholders involved. And this is a really important part of this project and planning projects like this because we can do what we can on a desktop or by going out and looking at existing conditions. But we really have to hear about what people say in order to truly assess where our, where the gaps or holes are in our network. And so we really take community engagement seriously as part of this planning process. Then, of course, we analyze the conditions for people walking, for people bicycling. We prioritize certain projects based on how well they meet the criteria of all these people, and we create kind of a map, a plan, or, you know, kind of a guidance for the city for the future to implement these projects. And then, of course, we always take into consideration the coordination that's going to be required from the city in order to make some of these projects happen. Coordination with housing, transportation, and other major infrastructure projects. You know, we wish we could do a pie in the sky, you know, plan, but the reality is things need to be implementable and things cost money. And so we definitely take these seriously and we take feasibility into account. So the project timeline for this, you know, we started in winter two thousand and nineteen and right before kind of COVID kicked off, you know, in like February, March, two thousand and twenty. And what that really did was it slowed down our public engagement process, but it didn't stop it. We continue to engage with the public and to hear feedback on existing conditions. We've also met with the citizen advisory team that the city and we have put together to help guide this plan and its progress. And we've had a website and online presence available for citizens at Riverbank to offer their thoughts and input on what we're doing and the plan itself. Right now, we're kind of in this recommendations phase where we haven't yet come out with recommendations, but we wanted to come to you first before we actually get to that phase so that you had a chance to provide us with any input you had, or just so you can have a progress update before we make project recommendations. And of course, the remainder of the project will include online and, you know, website, input opportunities, kind of hybrid in person or hybrid online engagement opportunities, more engagement with the citizen advisory team, and then finally, a draft and final plan happening next spring. So in terms of walking and biking in Riverbank today, you know, first we looked at land use and just really understanding what is the land use around, around the city, and how is that going to help us assess where walking and biking occurs or where it should occur, and where is the greater need? And so, you know, just kind of at a high level, you know, we realized that it is a tight little, you know, grid community, and there's definitely a higher density of residents there. While the majority of the city, a little bit more sprawled out, very residential, which means more, you know, people who have children needing to walk to school, or people needing to access trails or low-stress forms of active transportation as well. When we looked at driving to work, you know, we also looked at kind of, you know, what are some patterns there? We saw that the same kind of high density, higher density area in the city is also the area where people aren't driving to work as much, and maybe they're accessing transit more. Maybe they are kind of working within that general area, but that was just something interesting for us to know as we're planning our recommendations. Then seeing, you know, generally, this is probably something that a lot of people here know, you know, more or less, that communities like Riverbank, like Modesto, all along the valley, and all around California are very car-centric and lots of people have to drive alone. There's no other choice. We did see that a lot of people are carpooling, you know, eleven percent. That's, that's pretty good. A decent amount, you know, three point four percent are working from home, and I imagine that's going to increase now. And there is a, you know, very low two percent number of commuters who are walking, biking, or taking transit, and that's, you know, collectively within all of those. And so, you know, we want to focus on, well, how do we take some people who, you know, feel like driving alone is their only means to get to somewhere and try to convert them to, maybe not convert, but give them more options to walk and bike and take transit? Now, when we looked at what's existing in Riverbank, we found that really there's only two bicycle facilities. What you're seeing here is virtually every type of bike facility that is available around the country. You know, you have Sherros, which are to the very left, the Class Two Bike Route, bike lanes, separated bike lanes, but in Riverbank, there's really only two. There's the Class Two Bike Lane, which everyone here is probably very familiar with, just to paint and stencil on the ground. There's about seven miles of that. And then a trail or a shared use path, which is also known as a Class One. And there's a little over a mile of trail network in the city. And that's what this looks like here. So the yellow is Class Two or just standard bike lanes, and the green is Class One, trails or shared use paths. So as you can tell, you know, there are, there is a small network there, but it could definitely be increased and enhanced. Next, we looked at bicycle collisions, you know, on the topic of safety, you know. We, a big concern that kind of people across the board have when people walk in the city is, well, how safe is it? Or, you know, perception of safety. And so we looked at historic safety data to see where in the past, and in fact, in five years, between twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen, have there been bicycle collisions? And so this map shows exactly that, and it shows the instances of bike collisions. As, as you can tell, Patterson, you know, there seems to be a trend there where Patterson, this very big arterial road, you know, it's a big thoroughfare, very, you know, catered to vehicle traffic is where majority of bicyclists have been, have been involved in collisions. And we looked at pedestrian collisions as well. Similar, similar pattern, you know, there's like a decent amount of bike collisions along Patterson, and also some in some of these neighborhoods, you know, across the elementary and up there, you know, on high street. So the dark colors also represent fatality. So that's something that's really important to note, especially as we begin to develop recommendations, is taking a close look at these areas to see what can be done in the future in terms of infrastructure enhancements to, to improve the conditions here for pedestrians so that fatalities can, or collisions can be reduced. So our main considerations when we look at an existing conditions analysis and when we really assess the network are these things here to the left. You know, first we consider what are some upcoming developments and projects? You know, we have been working with the city on some, on a few plans that the city has, like the West Crossroads, other, and other projects, and we have to consider those as well because those are opportunities for projects that come out of this plan to be funded through, you know, other means in the city, through the developer. It also makes it to where you are providing the developer or a project kind of the guidance for what is actually needed within that project. Then we look at, then we also looked at regional connections. So what does Stan Cox say? What does their plan say about bicycling and walking, you know, for, in the greater county? And making sure that the recommendations that we're proposing and anything that we're looking at ties into their plan as well and vice versa, you know, that's definitely a two-way conversation. And we want to make sure that what is, makes sense for Riverbank and also makes sense for Riverbank citizens within the county. Net bike network mileage, as you saw, is, is low right now. So increasing that, you know, is something that we consider. And then, of course, safety, you know, safety plays an important role in this and addressing previous safety issues in order to avoid future safety issues. For example, the railroad crossing at Patterson, which I'm sure, you know, many of you and many pedestrians and people throughout the city would agree, and in fact, have mentioned throughout public input, is definitely a safety concern. So in terms of our public outreach and what we've done to solicit feedback to date, we had a very strong presence on our online virtual engagement format or event. So far, it's, it's all we've been able to do, you know, typically for, and in fact, for this project, we had scheduled a couple pop-up events, excuse me, which means that we are going out to where people are, grocery stores, events, churches, and really speaking to people one-on-one, and that's a great way to meet people where they are. Because let's face it, you know, inviting someone to a meeting at five P M. at City Hall, it doesn't, it doesn't really cut it. You're not going to get the audience you really want to talk to. So pop events are really great for that. And then we also have, we also have a workshop plan. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we've had to kind of adjust what we're doing, and so far, we've only been available in the digital realm. But in fact, it's actually been successful. So walkbikereverbank.com is the website where you can see this map, which you see up there. It's an interactive map that allows anybody to leave pins, leave comments, draw routes, and let us know what your story is about walking and biking in the city, whether it's a positive one, whether you're saying, I love this trail, or I love this street, and I walk here every day. That's really good feedback. Or on the flip side, if you need to tell us that a certain intersection or a certain area is a barrier for you. If it's just a place where you will not walk, will not bike, or if it's the reason why you won't, we need to know that also. So what you're seeing is a lot of people giving us that feedback on that website. And the great thing about it is, unlike a public meeting where it's happening at one place in time, this has been living throughout the duration of the project. So people can access it at their own leisure and at their own time. It's also available in Spanish. And so so far, we've had about eight hundred page visits, four hundred thirty users, you know, have used the web map, and we've received twenty-six just general public comments. So it's also a place where you don't have to interact with the map. You could also just tell us comments of, you know, any kind of general comment you may have. So we've been working with a citizen advisory team, which you also see here on the page, a kind of screenshot of one of our meetings with them. And this is a citizen advisory team that the city and Alt have put together of stakeholders in the community who, you know, we invited to represent their networks or, you know, or any kind of groups who they may be affiliated with. And so a lot of these people are affiliated with school district, nonprofits, or, you know, just business partners throughout the city. And so they are a great voice, and they also know the city well, so they're able to guide this process. So we've been meeting with them so far twice, and we have, I believe, two more meetings, and they've been giving us really great feedback. So for the, for the next realm of outreach, which we'll go over a little later, we still have more outreach opportunities. So this is what we've received so far in terms of responses on the website. We basically took what people had and remapped it, just to kind of simplify things. So people have told us where areas are difficult to cross, where are some biking and walking destinations that they currently access. The kind of lavender purple color here shows spots where people feel need to be improved, you know, where they would like kind of access improvements to happen. The green also represents a need for safer biking and walking facilities. And then blue is, is just basically a place where people see the need for safer walking space. So these directly came from people's comments on the website. People are also able to draw routes, which is really, really neat and a really great feature of this website. So you can draw your route and let us know which route you wish, you know, was, could be improved so that your walking and biking experience could be enhanced. And so that's, that's what we're showing you here, are people drawing mainly along Patterson and Roselle, the need for improvements or basically these streets acting as opportunities for walking and biking improvements. And then a couple, a few dots around the map you see are dots where people are considering these to be kind of barriers to walking and biking. And within the comment itself, sometimes people can leave a little bit more narrative behind it, like letting us know why these are barriers. But at the very least, they're at least telling us, please look at these spots. So that's really valuable to us. So we take all this information, which, you know, we condensed for you for this presentation, and we looked at, and we're looking at making recommendations. Now, we're in the stage right now where we're not necessarily ready to make actual project recommendations. We're still forming, forming these ideas and getting ready to basically go out in the field and make actual project recommendations with details and costs and all those things associated with it. But for the meantime, we want to come, we came up with a strategy for how are we going to make these recommendations? You know, what's guiding our recommendation process? And the first one is the idea or philosophy of crosstown connections. You know, there's a need for people to get from one side of the city to the other, and that need can only really be met with a handful of major arterials and collectors throughout the city, you know, Oakdale, Patterson, Roselle, Action Center. These are streets that really connect people from all corners. And so focusing on these to allow people to make these crosstown connections on bicycle, on, you know, or walking or on transit is really important. Safe routes to school was something that has come up throughout our engagement and throughout our analysis also. You know, there's, you know, we're looking at six schools, including Mesa Verde, up there to the, to the right or to the north. And, you know, how, how does the network around these schools of children and families walk or bike to school? And, you know, this is something that is, is not only important, but also helps create a culture of walking and biking. Because if you start young, like when, you know, kids are children and going to school, you can really create some, some really great habits there. Whereas if schools are neglected, or if infrastructure around schools is not made pleasant for children to walk, well, they're only going to be really looking at, you know, getting a car once they're able to. So really, you know, this recommendation and this philosophy also ties in with a programmatic and kind of a culture change recommendations as well. Then we looked at city, what we're calling the City of Trails, you know, concept, of connecting the city with a network of trails. of connecting the city with a network of trails, a lot of which would be based around the existing um irrigation canals. You know, these are great opportunities and just existing right-of-way that is a right for for trails. And especially trails that really provide shortcuts for bicyclists and pedestrians, you know, cars can't access these. And, you know, a lot of these are are just really um great, low-stress, fun places that people, you know, could access for either of them creation or to get from one side of the city to the other. Um and, you know, we've seen this in the in the previous plan and the Stan in the Stan Cog plan as well. And we've, you know, heard it through the outreach, how important um the concept of trails is for people. Um and then also the uh concept of creating a downtown for for people, you know, and making the gateways to downtown uh more inviting and enhancing them so that people can kind permeate through that barrier um of Patterson or Ashinson and and get to downtown, you know, what An example would be, you know, kids at Riverbank High School trying to get to the middle school or uh try to get to the pool, you know, how do we make those um gateways friendly or more inviting for people? Uh as part of this plan, we'll also be making programmatic. So, you know, don't think infrastructure. Let's think of programs, ways that um culture can change and um the city what things the city can do to help um bring change, you know, of of walking and biking. Um, you know, without spending a lot of money on 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 infrastructure, things like wayfinding. So we'll see in the middle image there, there's a bike route sign with um some signage also of how to get to certain locations. Um, you know, so that that could be a really great wayfinding program or a public map system. Um also, you know, kind of ingraining like a parklet or street seating program, which especially during now during COVID, you know, we've seen pop up all over the place. And then um kind of enhancing the bicycle parking and inventory program as well and make it more um of, you know, make that a a bigger resource for cyclists. So these are something, these are things just to kind of look for, um when it's time to present the plan, you know, we'll we'll be providing these recommendations. So after drafting, after, you know, looking at all of those philosophies, we layer all of those concepts on top of each other. And this, what you're seeing here, is not the network of recommendations, but it's our, it's what's going to guide us. This is what we've seen um is the, you know, this network is is so far after we've done our analysis. This is the network that we want to focus on. And of course, this isn't to say that um recommendations that we'll provide won't include streets outside of these uh highlighted streets. This is more of like the focus or the backbone behind our recommendations. So this is going to be guiding how we're making recommendations in the future. Um and there's still a lot more work to do, but this is just kind of a a sneak peek at at that process. So the next steps are, you know, now that we've really assessed conditions and taken in all this information and analyzed it, uh we want to go out to the field and um and and actually look at, look at a lot of these conditions. This is something that we would have done earlier on in the process, but because of COVID, things have just gotten a little bit more complicated. Tie this into our outreach opportunities. Um but we still um are planning on going out there and and actually assessing conditions in person. Then we'll develop a draft network of recommendations, so actual projects and detailed projects that we'll present to the citizen advisory team, to the public. Um and we will get, we will solicit feedback from the public also on these projects. And we want to hear from people if these projects you know, are are good in their eyes, or if there's something else that needs to be improved, or if we completely miss something and it needs to be added in there. This is definitely their opportunity to do so. Um and we'll put those recommendations on the website, collect feedback that way in the winter. Um we'll have two uh additional uh pop uh outreach opportunities aside from the website. So two pop-up events, which will have to be some kind of a hybrid virtual setting. And then a community workshop, which um we're very capable of doing and have great experience doing online. We've received um some really great numbers of attendance online as well um through the through, you know, for a community workshop. And then finally drafting the Riverbank Active Transportation Plan in the spring and bringing that to you for um for adoption. So uh that is the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Uh Vice Mayor Uribe.
I have one on canals. Uh you talked about using the canals. Have you talked with gotten right-of-way approval with the M I D? I I think I started that in twenty thirteen and it was difficult to crack.
Yeah, you're you're not alone in that. Um we have not yet because we haven't made um recommendations just yet, but that is definitely something that we will need to do as part of this plan and we'll work with the city on that prior to making those recommendations. So it's still on our to-do list. Um but yeah, yeah, thank you.
Uh Vice Mayor Uribe here. Uh that area of concern on Patterson where we were where we were seeing the higher incidence, is there anything that we can do as a city now? I know we're we're just kind of drafting this and everything, but is there anything that we can do now to kind of address any of that?
Absolutely. Um absolutely. So as part of our recommendations, what we typically do, um especially for high priority areas like this, we provide low um uh short, short-term uh recommendations, quick builds, things that don't require as much money, that don't require as much um infrastructure change, we'll provide those and we'll provide the long-term improvement. So it may be that one of these um, you know, intersections or or corridors needs some major change, you know, it needs hypothetically, needs a road diet, it needs a complete new intersection redesign, what have you. We understand that that's that requires a lot of money and a lot of effort. Uh it's not something that can be done at the flip of the switch. So although that is still important to present to you and to put into a plan because, you know, the the I the hope is that that could happen at some point in time later down the line, once funds are gathered, we would still present um short-term opportunities to address that. And you can do, there's a a lot of really great um ways to do that with um things like paint and post um curb extensions, you know, just simply using paints and ball and paint and ballards to um provide a little bit more uh right-of-way for for pedestrians, for example, to make the crossing shorter. You can do things like that. You can install um flashing beacons, you know, those are relatively cheap to install, um you know, when you compare it to like a traffic signal study, for example. So we will definitely provide that and and we're um we're looking forward to, you know, working with you on on really um creative and short-term solutions.
Thank you, Otto.
With that, though, that is a Caltrans uh roadway there. And you have to also take a look at what were the causes of the fatalities, you know, wearing black clothes at uh twenty-two hundred with no light and stepping in front of a car. And two of those instances was um, you know, something that there's a lot of responsibility outside of just the roadway and the curbs.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, so we um we do take a look at that as well. And, you know, we see if we can make a distinction between um infrastructure changes, um education, um, you know, and and even seeing like what was the culprit, I guess you could say, of of the incident is important because sometimes, like to give you an example, sometimes um the the reason for an incident can still open up an opportunity to um to make changes uh to improve the network. So for example, if if there's an incident caused by someone, you know, biking on the wrong side of the road, clearly bicyclists, you know, would be at fault in that particular incident. But we have to see is, was there enough, was there a bike lane on the other side for for that bicyclist to use? Or why were they doing that? You know, so we want to dive a little bit deeper to ask the questions as like, why was, why were those decisions made? Um so that we could, you know, hopefully even find a solution. But I agree, we need, we will take a look closer at at the details.
Any other comments? I want to thank you very much, Sue. Thank you. Continue the hard work. Uh come up with a perfect plan and then Kathleen and Sue, you can go and get money from Stan Cog and other um A T Gs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Otto.
Kathleen, good job.
Thank you.
Item two, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council L R A Board. Comments are maximum to three minutes or under state law, matters presented during the public comments cannot be discussed or acted upon. If you'd like to join us to make comments now or any business item that we're about to consider, please refer to the last page of the agenda for comments procedures. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
No, Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak.
Very well. We'll move on to item three, the consent calendar. Consisting of item three A, wave reading. Item three B, approval of the July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Item three B one, approval of the uh August nineteenth, twenty-twenty special city council ma- minutes. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the items for comment? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated by Councilmember Barbara Martinez and a second by the Vice Mayor. Roll call, please.
Council authority members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item four point one, second reading by title only of proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-one to approve development agreement zero-three dash twenty-nineteen by and between the City of Riverbank and DT California LLC doing business as Ariza.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh as as uh council's aware, this is a second reading. There are no changes to the project uh compared to previous or compared to the previous report. Most of the concerns that council discussed have been discussed during the previous uh public hearing. We can uh go over any specifics of the report you'd like, if you'd like, but other than that, the project remains the same.
Thank you, Sean. Council, is there any uh additional items you need or you want any clarifications from the last uh meeting we had? Seeing all the heads shaking to the left and right. Uh Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there are no public comments.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-one as presented?
Councilmember Fosse, I move that we, I make a motion that we approve four point one.
Councilmember Campbell, I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve as stated item uh ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-one by Councilmember Fosse and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item four point two, second reading by title only of proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-two. Approving Development Agreement Number Zero-Two Twenty-Twenty for the Ward Villas Affordable Housing Project to extend the life of the approved Ward Villas tentative map zero-one dash twenty-fifteen to real property at twenty-nine-twelve Ward Avenue A P N one-three-two dash zero-three-six dash zero-zero-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh similarly, uh this is a second reading. The project remains unchanged from the first reading. The only thing I'll add is that um uh the project developer, Kerry Pope, the Assistant City Manager and myself are working on a separate M O U that will be at your next meeting, which details the grant and uh and potential housing loan um cooperation that that we're working on with uh Mr. Pope to make this project truly affordable. And we'll have all of those details to you in a separate, it's a cooperative agreement we would have with him on the affordability. Uh but in terms of the planning component, which is what you're voting on tonight, the project remains unchanged.
Thank you. Are there any uh council comments or questions? Sean, I just have a quick one. Um given the current landscape uh economic situation, when does he think that he could start developing?
Um, you know, Mayor, Kerry, I think, is on the uh an attendee, so he could probably answer that more directly. But I, what he's told me is that as soon as uh the grant components are ready to go and um he finishes up the acquisition, um my understanding was he intended to move away immediate, move forward immediately. So I I my guess would be quarter one of next year, but um he's on the line, so he may be able to respond to you directly.
Kerry, are you available? Okay, that's not that as important as.
I think he just un- unmuted. There he is.
There he is.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, Kerry Pope.
We can hear you, Kerry. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, Mayor, to answer your question, we are working on the acquisition that will that will be done within the next uh three to four weeks. Then after that, we will get our off-site plans completed, turned in and to plan checked and signed. Um and then we will be proceeding from there. So my guess is is that uh, you know, allowing for some time for P G and E. Uh we're probably looking at uh hopefully uh late winter, early spring, uh starting to push dirt.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-two as presented?
Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll make a motion. We approve item four point two as stated.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I second.
We have a motion to approve I uh ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-two as presented by the Vice Mayor and a second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point one, uh new business, a resolution approving application for per capita funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this is uh Sue is going to give the report on this this evening. This is a um uh a nice uh benefit to the Parks Bond that passed years ago and um some much-needed money for our parks uh system. And so she's going to talk you through our thought process about um uh how we're going to move forward with that. And I think the item is really just to allow us to move forward in claiming those funds. Uh so I'll pass it on to our Parks and Rec Director, Sue.
Mayor, members of the council, um the Prop sixty-eight grant um actually is the statewide park development and community revitalization program. And it has two sides. One is the competitive grant side that we're going to be talking about on our next item, and then one is the per cap- capita. So with the per capita funds, it's similar to what we had years ago in Prop twelve and Prop forty. We develop a list of projects. They have to meet a certain criteria. And then we do the applications and then complete the projects. We pay for the projects and then we get I share with you in a second. But the criteria for this one, we're supposed to get a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, and that's from two pots. That's from the general per capita and That's from the general per capita and then the per capita that is based on population of county and, and, uh, city. So we qualify for both those pots. So adding those together, it's a hundred ninety seven thousand. Um, the other criteria is it has to be in a, what they qualify as a severely disadvantaged community. If we choose a project that is out of that criteria, we have to pay twenty percent match for each project. So we definitely want to choose our projects wisely to get the most money, uh, that we can. So I'm going to try to share this. This right. In the heck. Wait a minute. That didn't work. Let me try that again.
Do you want me to try to share it for you, Sue?
Can you do that?
Yeah.
It would be the per capita one.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Care, we get? So these are the projects that, uh, we do have on our list of things that we need to do. And most of these projects do meet the criteria, um, for the per capita funding, other than the sports complex, because that is an area that doesn't, uh, qualify. But as you can see, um, we have the, the list of projects here and the justification. Um, all of those are things that are, are really needing to be done. And as our park master plan, citywide park master plan we just completed, really emphasizes we need to take care of what we have. And I really agree with that. Um, the total funds, like I mentioned, for the per capita are a hundred ninety seven thousand. We do have some CDBG funds that were, um, targeted for this year for Castleburg Park in the amount of a hundred and thirty five thousand. So that would help with the Castleburg Park Trail renovation. Um, but in all, we have a total deficit of about four hundred and thirty six thousand, uh, nine sixty in order to get these projects done. But at least this is something that would, uh, get us a little bit further where we need to be. So that's kind of really like Sean said, the, the resolution tonight is just to approve us submitting applications for the per capita. And that's basically the first step in the process. And, uh, we have until December of twenty twenty one to, um, submit these, but the sooner we do it, the better because, you know, costs will just go up. So we want to get these projects going and completed, um, as soon as we can. So I don't know if there's any questions or any comments. Um, I'm not sure where priorities are as far as these list of projects, but I thought maybe we could talk about that a little bit.
Couple items, uh, Sue, uh, if I, if you go ahead and submit these, let's say, uh, in a prioritized order now, and the deadline for submission is a year from now. Would they, uh, tell you which ones they accepted? And can you reapply for those not accepted later on?
No, if, if they don't meet the criteria, and they have to be basically, um, they have to be capital outlay for recreational purposes. So pretty much before I would submit an application, I would talk to our project officer if there was any question, if it wouldn't be. So by the time we submit an application, we pretty much know it's going to be approved.
So, um, most of it could be submitted with the exception of the, uh, community kitchen. I mean, that's although I have fun cooking, that's not something that, unless you're going to use it as an entertainment value.
Yeah, that one, you know, I think it would, as far as capital outlay, they used an example in the workshop that I, uh, I went to and they kind of used an example of something similar to the kitchen. And I think because it's a renovation, it's not just a repair. It's, there's a lot of need there. And we do use it for a lot of special events as well. I think it probably would pass. That would be something I would discuss with the project officer prior to kind of verify, because it is in a little bit of the gray area. And they will fund a partial project as well.
Okay. That was my next question. All right.
Yeah.
And Mayor, in, in terms of, uh, by the way, this list you see up here is not, um, necessarily in order of, of our opinion of importance. Um, they're all important. Uh, but we had looked at, you know, like, for example, the council has budgeted some funds already for the kitchen renovation, although we changed that during this current budget. But like, for example, um, the Castleburg Park Trail renovation, that already has a some money that has been identified through our, um, consortium funds, which is that CDBG number you see there. Uh, but obviously, it's not going to be enough to complete the project. So as we kind of move forward, as long as these general projects jive, um, the qualified ones jive with council's desires to, you know, you, you want to see most or not all of them done. Um, we would recommend that we'll just do what we can to package together funding from other um, sources to try to complete each one of these. Uh, you know, the per capita money may only help with one to two of those projects, but, uh, as you'll hear as we get further down into the, uh, uh, agenda, there are other ways that we can, um, move on some of these projects as well.
Well, you know, OPM is the best way of do- going. Is there any other comments or questions?
Uh, Vice Mayor, your rebate here. Um, I, I do trust Sue. I think she's going to do her due diligence as far as the, that gray area with the community center, uh, kitchen renovation, uh, portion of it. Everything else, um, in agreement with, uh, and I don't have any other concerns at the moment.
Say no other comments. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Vice Mayor, your rebate here. I'll make a motion. We approve item as presented.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Uribe and a second by Councilmember Fossey. Sorry, Cal, she stepped right in front of you. Roll call, please. Sorry.
Cal.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point two, a resolution approving the application for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, now to the one we're, we're really excited about. Um, this is, uh, Sue has spent, not only spent a lot of time on the first time we applied for this grant, but we, we doubled down on that effort um, for the second round of funding. There's, there's more funding available. We, we feel more competitive this time. And this is a transformative project, as she's going to explain to you in a moment here. And so we'll pass the mic to her.
Mayor, members of the council, so Prop sixty eight, this is the competitive, very, very competitive side of the grant. And last year, there was two hundred and fifty four million dollars available. Uh, this is the largest parks related grant program in the history of California and probably the US. Um, there is, the good news is this year, there's more funds available. There's three hundred and ninety five million dollars available. So there's more funding. The bad news is the workshops that I just went to, there were a thousand people who attended. So the competition is huge. Um, but you do have to meet a certain criteria. You have to have a project that is, um, meets the acreage, the less than three acres per one thousand people within a mile radius. And it has to be a severely disadvantaged community. So we meet both of those at the community center park. That's the good news. Um, also, the good news, even though I was very, very disappointed that we didn't get the, the grant last year, I was assured that it wasn't the grant. It was the competition. We just didn't fall into the, there were a lot of people that were in greater need than we were. And this next pool, maybe we will fall in a different, you know, category, and that will help us as well. So all we can do is try again. And I did get a couple points of, um, suggestions on the grant, how we can maybe strengthen it. And one was public art, adding public art. So we have added that. And also adding, um, uh, that cat distracted me. Uh, was that a cat? Um, anyway, um, public art and the other was solar lighting. So those two things, um, we're adding in. Other than that, the project is the same. So we don't have to redo everything again, although I'm going to beef up our narrative and everything. Uh, we did have a community meeting last Saturday. Um, not a lot of people came, but we did canvass the neighborhood before the meeting and talk to people. So uh, we did get a lot of input on a couple of different, uh, little additions to the grant to make it stronger. Um, so we do need a new resolution, and that's why we're here tonight. They do want us to do a new resolution to make sure council is still, uh, buys into the project, being the community center park, uh, renovation project. Um, and just, I want to share real, real quick with you, the design. It's almost done. Um, and Annabelle, should I try this? Or do you want to do it? I'll try it again. I'll see if I can share this correctly this time.
Let me know if you want me to jump in.
I do. I just can't get back to where.
Okay.
Got it up there, but now I've lost.
Do you see it?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to just talk? Um, so basically, this is the design that we've come up with, and this is what the community came up with. Um, this is made up of people who come to our pool for recreational swimming, swim team, people who visit the park. And it's basically just adding another pool with a learner pool. So we can do things like our autistic swim lessons. Um, at the same time, as swim team's going on, we have a separate pool, or we can have swim lessons at the same time as other competitive things are going on in the other pool. And people really wanted a play feature, um, a water feature i- in, in some type of a pool setting. So we just moved the playground, um, to the west. And we would have it fully incluse-inclusive. We would have our new standards with shade and pouring place. Uh, people wanted exercise equipment, a couple little pods where they could exercise where their, uh, kids are playing on the playground. We'd, uh, make sure there's pathways, so it's easily walkable, solar lighting, uh, new irrigation, which is really, really needed. Um, and a half basketball court for the teens, because they've really wanted that. And basically, just a renovation of the whole area, which is in, in great need of that. So in the end, we'd have an, a park that's uh, renovated to last many, many more years. So what we have now is, even though it, it looks pretty good, um, the pool is in need of, of drastic renovation, as well as the locker rooms and the decking doesn't meet ADA and a lot of other, um, issues like that. So that's kind of the design, and, uh, we're still working on it a bit. It's still going to be close to eight million dollars total project. Um, the grant goes up to eight point five million, so. If there's any questions or comments, but basically, we're looking for a resolution to approve the resubmital of the application.
Sue, for the viewers' question, could you talk a little bit about the art concept that was added to this?
Right, the art concept, um, there's a couple different ideas and, let's see, if I can go to the other slide. Um, Annabelle, can we get to that other slide? Um, the bronze statues that we have around town, we were thinking, uh, that maybe we could have one there that would be kind of a symbol of community, of kids playing or family of some sort. And we had some samples um, of those. And a lot of people we talked to liked that idea. Also, more than one, there are some interactive walls where there might be a painting on the back and you could stand, like, maybe the wings of a butterfly and you stand in the middle and, uh, take a, a photo shot. There's also the murals that we've, you know, had a lot of luck with around town, the paint by number, which would maybe be on one of the pool walls, um, that would be a scene of some, you know, aquatic type of scene that would involve the community. So I think we're going to put more than one in the grant, just because everybody got really excited when we started talking about public art. So I think it is going to be a really good addition.
Sue, this is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to let the public come out and, um, view, you know, what we envision and, and also, um, you know, just to have them to have input. And I like the, um, the pirate playground, because I felt that it would be inclusive for everyone with the ramps that it had and just the lower features, you know, uh, so kids or the disabled can get to it. And then also, um, the, uh, swings that were inclusive for everyone. So I like that, that, uh, kind of concept of a playground. And I know you probably don't have a picture. And then I know a lot of people, including me, would be interested in the splash pack. So I'm glad we're, we can, you know, we have a plan for that. And hopefully, that'll come, pretty soon, so I can get my toesies wet. But thank you.
This is Councilmember Fossey. This looks like a great plan, Sue. I'm, I'm excited for it to be turned in. And I'm going to wish you the best of luck in getting this, because we sure could use it, um, in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, I knew you had a, uh, outreach on Saturday. How many signatures did you get?
Probably about twelve to fifteen.
Okay.
There wasn't a, a huge turnout, but people trickled in and, and, like I said, we canvassed the neighborhood. So a lot of people were talked to on a one-to-one basis. So I think with COVID and everything, it was, it was worth coming out for sure. And I think even though they said we don't have to have any more community meetings, I wanted to have one. Uh, we might try to do a social media type of thing, one more ver- virtual, because we have a little bit of time before the grants do. It's due December fourteenth.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? Annabelle, is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Bring it back to the council. Is there any recommendations on this item?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I, uh, make a motion. We approve item six point two.
Vice Mayor, your rebate here, I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve item six point two by Councilmember Barbara Martinez and Vice Mayor second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Item six point three, youth commission discussions in direction.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I am going to share my screen. And here we go. Okay, um, so, uh, council has pla- uh, placed a strategic plan objective. Um, actually, I was just going through the full strategic plan a couple of weeks ago. just going through the full strategic plan a couple of weeks ago. Um, every month or so, I'd try to look at it and, and the things we've checked off, I'll run on to the next uh item. And one of the few remaining issues that we haven't really uh made a lot of progress on yet um had been that council discussed um during the last session about um it was in a more general discussion that had to do with community engagement. How do we get the community more involved and what the council and, and city are doing? And one of the ideas that was brought up, um, I think has been brought up a number of times in the past too, uh was a youth commission. So um uh, uh Sue sent me an email actually earlier today and gave me a little history lesson on some of the um youth commission history we have here at Riverbank. It's actually an idea that has had some uh footing before and has been really successful. So I thought I'd just kind of share for those of uh, those of us that haven't been around for a really long time, um, what the, the previous has been. And so uh, one example is, is back uh when they were formulating this, the skate park idea. Um, a task force was put together with about twenty uh members of youth who helped raise funding and helped assist in the design of the skate park. And then skate camps and competitions um and built a lot of excitement after that facility was originally built years ago. Um, secondly, there was a youth and teen committee, which was organized uh through Sue and um, it was uh between twelve and fourteen members. It had a formal president, treasurer, fundraising committee. Their, their effort was to help with fundraising and grant work uh at the time uh to expand the sports complex and then eventually the, the teen center was built um with their assistance. She did mention that sometimes regular meetings could be difficult because students were all very busy. I think she said that a lot of her meetings that she had with them were on Saturdays and she would buy pizza to try to coax them into, into showing up, but it, it was a, a, a useful tool um and helped, helped keep them engaged. And then um, years ago, apparently there was a Students in Government Day, excuse me, that was held in May. And about twenty s- uh students would participate and would decide what department they wanted to shadow. And then I suppose towards the end of the day, they would hold a mock city council meeting and they'd have lunch. Uh, and it gave them a little bit of a view of what local government really is and hopefully maybe even got some of, some of them interested in getting into it after uh, after they finish school. So that's just a couple of examples of where we've had some success with youth committees in the past. Now, for this new effort, one of the things we wanted to discuss since there wasn't a lot of discussion about it at strategic planning was how do we want to uh set this up? And so I came up with some key criteria after I looked at a, a bunch of other programs. I mean, you can there are very grandiose models that exist in much larger communities and smaller communities, you have more informal groups. So there's really a whole scope that uh range rather that you could um direct us to move forward on. But really, they come down to four key thoughts that I just wanted council to discuss a little bit and give some direction on. Uh, first is structure, second is scope, and also, or also purpose. And then the uh final one is allocation of resources uh by council to, towards this effort. So we'll go into some detail here real quickly and I'll turn it over to you for discussion. So with regard to structure, what I mean is um, should we be looking at more of a formalized structure uh or more of an informalized structure? Should be in, uh start as an informal structure and then if we have enough interest, it builds into formal. Um, how would you like that set up? How many members would we be looking for? What are our targeted age groups? And what kind of recruitment process would you like to see? Um, on the scope, concept and purpose, which is probably the most important thing that we need some direction on is what's the purpose that we're trying to achieve here? Um, what items are we really interested in them advising the council on? Um, and in, in my opinion, just being involved with these in the past and other, other commissions, um, having a specific mission that interests youth might, may lead to a longer, more productive life of the commission. So if you, I think what you saw in some of those examples from the past were when they were working specifically related to a project of some kind or advising on, on issue, specific issues. Those seem to engage the students more um than too many uh responsibilities all mashed into one. And then finally, um, allocation of resources, uh, you know, this can be as, as detailed and specific or as broad as, as council really likes. Um, but what we know is that staff time and effort are needed in depending, uh, and depending on the, the makeup and focus of the commission. Um, and, and so there should be at least some discussion that we can incorporate it into whatever ends up being our final budget this year about what types of resources could be allocated towards this effort. So that's really the, the, the uh setting for this discussion. Um, and uh, I'm just here to kind of hear your feedback and then I will uh proceed forward and work with appropriate departments to get um, uh, the ball rolling and, and see what kind of interest there is in the community from the youth.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any thoughts?
Yeah, this is council member Barbara Martinez. Um I like the concept and the ideal, um, because I think that this is a good way for us to be mentors of, of uh our youth and to see, you know, who would be interested maybe in furthering their experience in city council. You never know what kind of leadership um qualities our young people have until we interact with and uh so that same, uh, we could have a five-member board and we could get, if, if we get enough interest, maybe someone from each district. And uh then we could be mentors. Um, and then also, um um, if we get the type of uh involvement from city council that, and we have like a structured um environment, that maybe we could have a couple of city council members to be on uh their commission, just to give guidance and so forth. And then for, I did some research on, on youth commissions. So for anyone that's interested in finding out more information on what other cities have, have uh done with their youth commissions, you can go to the Institute of Local Government or ILG, look on their website. And there are several cities that already have youth commissions. So just some food for thought. Thank you.
Any other?
Vice Mayor Revere, I'll jump in next, if you guys don't mind. Uh, let's see here. So as far as structure, uh, I'm leaning towards the informal and letting it kind of grow naturally. If the interest is there, just kind of letting it grow into a more formal structure. Um, I say we, I, I, I don't know about a limit on members. I say, you know, have it five to fifteen. Keep it informal. Let's have it at like, say, the teen center. I think that, I think the weather meeting is going to be crucial to if they show up and if it's going to be a formal setting or not. Um, the ages, I've seen some plans in Frisco that go from twelve to twenty-three. I've seen some in Lathrop that go from twelve to eighteen, so I'm open to wha- whatever the rest of the council's up uh in agreement there. Uh, I agree, it should, I, it should be open to all students in Riverbank. Think this would be a great wor- uh, great way for the east side of the city and the west side of the city uh to kind of merge since seeing as students are going to completely different schools. Um, as far as the purpose, um, yeah, anything pertaining to youth, to the youth population. Just some ideas that they could kind of work on, I, I, I guess is uh we've discussed as a council, we want to go do our own, as a city, like our own legislative action day. So this would be a, a cool way to kind of group them together and let's, you know, let's all take a trip up there um to do that. Um, maybe even giving them a budget, small budget, something that they can work towards or something that they can manage. Um, holding annual meetings with Park and Rec would be important, I think. Uh, when I jumped on to the city council, the strategic plan that we did, I thought was pretty important. Kind of laid the groundwork for, you know, wha- wha- what we're doing for the next two to three years. I think this would be important for them. Um, let's see. Uh, two areas I'd like to see is, you know, homelessness and how that's affecting the youth. I'd like to hear some uh best practices for that and uh ju- juvenile crime prevention. I'd like to see something in that regard.
Any other comments? I have a couple. This generation has put us to task on several major actions and I hoping that if we do a youth council or commission, however you describe it, is that they will take us to task on those main issues. Uh, fourteen, fifteen-year-olds are going to the, to Congress or international, internationally talking about climate change, gun, gun control, um, and social justice. They're not talking about, you know, minor items that we discussed, although homelessness is not minor and I'm not downplaying any of them. I would hope that we involve those in the high school uh range, um, from all three high schools or maybe three to five from each one, total of fifteen for your key core group. And then that core group can have others to help them solve if they're looking, for example, climate change. What does Riverbank have to do to help them with their climate change agenda? So when they take over, they're now in charge, uh, and they're inheriting a lot of their own work. Same thing with social justice or gun control. This generation is probably the most advanced generation in taking us to task. I, and again, I agree with, with Sean and with uh, uh, the other comments, that staff must be willing to engage just like they do engage with the city council. Um, I think funding can be taken some from the uh general fund. There are some, you have them write CDBGs, uh, and private funding, fundraising. And also uh, if necessary, for more safety funds. I think they should have a stipend, not much. Something that make them show up, um, other than on a Saturday with pizza. Make them on a Thursday for uh twenty dollars a meeting or something along those lines. We have the funding in the safety that will promote a lot of their own um areas. It could be where they don't want to go to those big ticket items yet. Maybe they do want to tackle, I'm hoping, a lot of our own problems. Homelessness is one. Um, some of the other is um, um some of the social changes that we're developing here in the city of Riverbank. And um, taking a look at economic development within the city and how is that going to affect the future? Again, they're engaging everyone else. It's time that we engage them on their level. And the ages, um, high school through twenty-one. And the reason why I say high school, a lot of these should have uh maybe two or three-year terms. And so if they get it at seventeen, they're, they're out of here at twenty, twenty-one years of age. Um, but you know, there are structures out there. Darling, you're right. Not only from um uh, the Institute of Local Governments, but also the National League of Cities and the US Conference of Mayors have just switched their ideas on what, how to engage the youth in government. And they're uh, uh, bringing a, bringing them about to uh some of the major issues of the day. So um, now, that's a lot of effort. That's a lot of work. So either we commit to it or we commit to um a status, as you say, uh Vice Mayor. Start off small, maybe they'll evolve um, uh, to higher levels. Um, I'm hoping that if we can involve them in the mid-level, that they do evolve to the upper level and engage nationally and internationally. Uh, not that I want to pay for international travel, but there's other groups that can do that. But again, I, I've said it before, uh, that this generation has taken us to task and what we do will help them um derive what is necessary. So when we leave it, they have something to work with instead of a catastrophe in climate control or some of the other areas of their um their main concerns. But that is, um, but I do like uh getting this moving. And I would like to see us in direction, work with staff, coming up with, with a program that is A, doable with the staff and B, the uh interest from the high schools. I don't know if you want to go to junior highs, but I think we go to high schools, there's three of them. You can get three to five members each. And if one high school isn't interested, uh, maybe they'll get interested later on. But tho- those are my thoughts. And all, that's all over the place, Sean, so if you can make some use out of it, please do. Are there any other comments?
I just had a, a comment. Um, Mayor, I agree with you. I think high school through twenty-one is good because those that are out of high school can help the others understand how to come in and how to do things. I think that was a great idea. Um how and what they would do, I think we let them direct that. Um, but I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good thing. Um, I think this is something my daughter would probably be interested in, so I'm, I'm off for it.
I'd like to make a comment also, Councilmember Campbell. I think it's a great idea. I think we need to reach out to the high schools to see how they feel about them and how they're going to select the people that are involved in it, to make sure there's a fair process for that. And I think we should start with some, say, projects or causes that might really attract them to want to do this and then build from that particular aspect as we see how the interest is. But I think it's a good idea too.
Ma- um, Mayor and Council, so I've just furiously scribbling notes here in my notebook of the different feedback. Um, maybe one idea we could do is, I, I've already had some conversations with at least one, almost two superintendents uh about this idea. One idea I had was we might pull, put out a call to students at those three high schools and I might just invite them to a Zoom meeting with me and maybe Sue and a couple of other staff members and, and, and tell them this concept and what we're trying to accomplish. And then um, like uh Vice Mayor and Mayor and Councilmember Fossey said, they all may have different ideas about what's important and interesting to them and why they may want to participate. And we could get some feedback from them on if they were going to sign up to do this, what would they want to discuss and spend time on? And then we can, you know, use their feedback to build this committee together. And you know, look, if they're willing to set up, show up to a meeting just to talk about being part of it, most likely they're going to want to be part of the commission when it's fully formed too.
Good idea.
This is uh Councilmember Fossey. My daughter belongs to a leadership group at Enoch's, so I would suggest um, that would be a good place to start there. And I'm sure each of the schools has that. They're already in a council type of setting because they're in leadership and they have to meet together as a group. So that would probably be a really great place to start with the uh, the council or the teacher that runs that program.
Sure, will, will do. And I will say one other thing to council members that is, it's a little bit of a joke, but it's also sort of serious that my experience has been when the youth that are getting ready to graduate get very involved in local government, they tend to run for office when they turn eighteen.
And some of them, Sean, uh, want to take over other uh positions on the staff.
Yes, I know.
They do. Um, I know a couple that uh, uh interned in uh, uh city finance and was able to uh get employment there. And I think that even happened with our assistant city manager.
I think you're right. Uh, we actually have a number of folks that started in recreation or in other types of programs like that and have made full careers here. So a- and it's great because to be honest with you, one of the things that from a, from an HR perspective that sometimes I'm a little disappointed in is we don't always get a huge amount of Riverbankians applying for positions here when they open. Um, so it'll be, I think there's a lot of benefits to it. I'll, I'll, um, I'll make sure we get that meeting uh together here in the next couple of weeks and we'll report back the findings from the, from the folks that participate and, and then um have you bless something before it is, is official.
Right, and, and as we're going for um, you know, who we are going to attract, I do like going to the uh leadership council that you had, Councilmember Fossey, but um, it should be open to the entire um student body and how they advertise for it is, I, I'm a little wary of having staff handpick people. I, you know, the schools handpick them. I'd rather them want to volunteer. And then as we're discussing with them, you know, we can determine whether or not they are truly interested or they're just doing um some of the uh You know, they're just giving lip service for credit at school. And then in the meantime, develop a core group of kids, excuse me, young adults. That will uh look at the the program and then they start pulling out those and then incorporating them. And then as they transition out, the new group comes up behind them.
You're right, mayor, um that's just a suggestion of where to start.
Well, no, I I didn't take, I I I'm glad that you suggested it. I do know they have city coun- I mean, not city council, school councils in some schools. So uh those, that would be a start too, but again, I would hate to have Jim Enox. Who I knew, you know, had started him selecting what he wanted because he had his own agenda items. But anyway, sorry, Jim. Uh clear directions, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Um Annabelle, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments.
Okay, there was no vote on this, so it's time to move forward. It will now come to item six point four, public benefit fund. Policy review and direction on desired amendments to the policy.
Thank you, mayor, um so uh I don't have a PowerPoint for this, this is really just.
Sean, you self muted yourself.
Sorry about that, um so I don't I don't have a PowerPoint on this, this is more of a direction item again. Um but on on August uh twenty second of twenty seventeen, uh the council adopted. Uh our cannabis business pilot program, it's hard to believe it's been that long now. Um prior to adoption of this ordinance, the council held a number of public hearings regarding the various types of cannabis businesses that. May be allowed and it actually have now been allowed here at Riverbank. Since that time, uh a number of successful cannabis related businesses have chosen to make Riverbank their home. And these include dispensaries, a distribution facility. As of about uh twenty minutes ago, it will now include a large scale industrial cannabis cultivation, manufacturing. And distribution operation at the cannery. Um and each of these um businesses have development agreements, as you know, that lay out. The terms of operation as well as a specific amount of public benefit fees to be paid to the city. Uh in June of twenty eighteen, the council approved a public benefit policy which detailed how we were going to spend those funds. And uh it split things into four categories and they are public safety, uh examples being additional. Um deputies or enhancements to our law enforcement contract. Uh another example would be we we pay for the camera system, like camera system out of that fund. Um code enforcement, we have added uh code enforcement staff and and uh. Been able to partially fund some of some additional code enforcement activities that actually helped with a lot of the legal grows that we have here at Riverbank. Uh three is service enhancements, which is provide grant opportunities to our residents for recreation programs. Obviously, this year because of COVID, we really haven't had as much of an opportunity to do that, but in future years, it'll be a good fun to help. Uh for those folks that maybe couldn't afford to put their kids in certain recreation programs to to help subsidize that. And then I uh finally, uh minor item offsets to other city departments for administration of the fund, primarily that's finance since they. Help for those those funds when they come in. So it was a very limit, by design, it was a very limited uh set of criteria because remember at the time. Um we were only uh less, not even a whole year into into the pilot program. And it was still very unclear to us how successful the public benefit uh fund was going to end up being. Um since that time, uh we have uh, you know, obviously added a number of cannabis businesses. And the, you know, the cannery project has the potential to um add a significant amount to the public benefit fund. And so therefore, um there had been some discussion prior to the adoption of the of the uh policy by council. A number of times that. Uh Norm, Norma, I think you're you're unmuted, Norma. Um I uh prior to that, um there had been some discussion about. Uh parks and community type projects that serve the community. Um as you know, the term for this fund is the public benefit fund. And what we were wanting to be careful about was that this didn't just become a slush fund. And the reason why we would be concerned about that is that you have some ongoing expenses that are coming out of tho- that fund. And so it's important that it remain healthy so that if, for example, uh there's a decline in revenues. Or there's some change in state policy with regard to our collection of them, that you still have a pretty sizable fund balance to continue to pay for those ongoing expenses. However, at this time, um if council would like to uh amend the policy or give direction to amend the policy. We think that it would be appropriate to have that discussion. Um because the fund has now been built to a level of health that we think it's appropriate to have some of that discussion. For example, um I I'm going to give just an illustrative example, the the uh community center kitchen project. Somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. Um when we got into the full design of it, it turned out that because this the kitchen is probably, well, it's. Uh over fifty years old at this point. Um there were a number of code and health code related things that needed to be changed, which added on. Probably another hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that project. So um it would be a project like that that council could say, look, this is something we otherwise couldn't afford, it's a community benefit. It funds community events, um and uh you could make a finding that that. A one time uh uh allocation from the public public benefit fund would be appropriate in that instance. So the way that I would uh uh recommend, if you wanted to extend your policy to include these kind of parks or facility related. Um items in your in your policy for authorized expenditures would be that any ex- new expenditures from the fund. That exceed twenty five thousand dollars have to come to council for approval. So um the reason uh why I think that's important is that. When we bring forward a specific project to you that we think may qualify under the policy. We would give you a concept of how the public benefit fund is doing in terms of health. Uh and the council could have a a discussion about the uh advantages and disadvantages of using that fund to to. Either move forward with the project or or not. Um and it allows you to have a little more control over it versus us turning around one day in two or three years and our fund is largely depleted. So that would be our recommendation if you wanted to expand the policy. I would like a little direction from council specifically on what items should qualify. The items that have been discussed are um. Uh uh capital projects related to parks and recreation, um eh one time uh costs. And perhaps one time costs related to uh homeless activities or grant matching for homeless activities, which I know is. Been mentioned at council and there really isn't any other funding source for outside the general fund. So those are the two that have been mentioned and and other than that, I don't have any other um anything else to add to the report aside from just getting your feedback. What I'll do based on that feedback is add it into Maricela's um policy and will bring you back a resolution that can have a. Have a uh an approval at council.
Sean, this is. Um it would help if I if we understood the money that is coming in on a monthly basis. Maybe if we could start getting a report um attached to our council agenda or something, because. I don't know how much is coming in, I don't know if it's ten thousand a month or fifty thousand a month. Um I'd be concerned about doing capital projects if it's only twenty thousand a month coming in. Um eh eh that would be helpful in me understanding what we could fund or not.
Sure, we we could do that, just to give you a ballpark example and Maricela, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I would say that depending on, a lot of our development agreements are based on gross receipts, so they've they've vacillate a little. But um certainly during COVID, a lot of those numbers have been higher than normal. Um and I would say that um we on a monthly basis probably brings in. Somewhere in the neighborhood of anywhere between eighty thousand and a hundred and twenty, maybe on the highest end, a hundred and thirty thousand a month.
And what expenses come out of that, are there any monthly expenses out of that?
We have um three major fixed costs that we're currently funding and that includes um two deputy sheriffs. So that's at a range of about three hundred thousand dollars. Um the contract for all of our camera systems, so that's about another eighty thousand dollars. And then the offsets to finance uh range between ten and fifteen thousand.
Okay, so the three hundred and the eighty thousand isn't a monthly, that's just an annual?
For the entire year, correct.
Thank you.
With the finance costs.
Thank you.
Okay, um in there, we should also include any legal cannabis activities based on. Um after the uh agreements have been signed. Um I think that that is a reasonable cost. You know, looking back in two thousand eighteen when we did this uh direction, there was a lot of directions. I know Councilmember Barbara Martinez at the time, uh wanted to see some in the parks and recs. And I also wanted to see more expansion into the parks. And I'm not certain, maybe we want to do as much as we had talked in in two thousand eighteen. But I am um game to do uh capital improvements or capital projects. Including homeless, but I just don't want to go expanding those funds for homeless if I. Don't have assurances from the county that we're going to have support. And right now, the county has been vacillating for two years, four months. Um and maybe the maybe they will, maybe they won't provide funding, but they'll provide funding to. Cities that have no plan, um so I I'm not happy with way that the county is dispersing those funds. So I don't want to expend our own funds, having to maintain a program that's unmen- that is not maintainable. Without the added resources that the state authorized the county to provide to us, if that makes sense.
Mayor, uh one question for you on that point, just I want clarification. What if there was an oper- you know, is one of the problems that we've had in the on the trying to create a solution locally for homeless has been property? Um what about like capital or one time purchases that facilitate something that might work towards a homelessness? Or transitional housing kind of project?
I'm game for that, but I just don't want it to be a standalone, this is the the funding source because after you. Acquire the the facilities, there's maintenance, there's staffing, there's a lot to go into it and I don't want to be left. Um holding the bag uh while others are, there's a lot of money out there that we're not utilizing correctly. And the county had um uh thirty million dollars that they're put in reserves that they could have put towards uh homelessness. And we could have resolved a lot of the issues, got people off the streets during the COVID um situation. But yeah, and we we have to, when we do the one time, we have to look at. Uh the sustainability and uh the long term effects.
Uh this is Councilman Fossey again, I just, I so I looked at the numbers, so if we look at the low end of eighty thousand. Um looking at roughly thirty three thousand a month that are fixed expenses right now. If we looked at maybe taking twenty to thirty thousand every month and putting it into a capital fund. And built it and then as a project comes along, we use those funds after they're approved by council. Then we're putting something away every month and we can look at when we're ready to spend it or if something comes up. And then we have the balance to do everything else that we need to do, so I mean, if we do a hundred and twenty. That's almost eighty thousand dollars and if we take thirty out, that's still fifty thousand a month. Um just kind of maybe start with a twenty five thousand a month with a way to capital projects and let it build. And then see where we go from there, um that's just a suggestion.
Vice Mayor, you're reading here, I like that idea, Cindy, what if we did it by a maybe a percentage, because I think our, I I think things are going to change if Ares comes through?
Yeah, I agree, because we don't know what we're going to get in from the new company that's coming in, that could be a lot higher, could be a lot lower, but. Um that's a great idea, uh but I think if we separate it and and kind of keep it the same but not the same, you know what I mean? Uh and it's set aside, that gives us an opportunity to see how it builds and what we can use it for.
Councilmember Campbell, I've got a couple of comments to make. Uh I think it's a great idea, the money that we're getting, but we've got to be very careful with it and use it uh in correct manners. One of the things that I see, we still haven't uh reached some of our strategic goals that we set up several years ago. We still have ADA problems in the community, we should look at some some of those being gotten out of the way. We have a street over near me that has telephone poles in it in the middle of the sidewalk on Stanislaw Street that. Wheel w- wheelchairs can't come down it because they're right in the middle of the block, that's violation of the law. I would like to clean up some of the things and then do other things too, and I think we still need to look at adding o- officers too. But I also want to be very careful, I'd like to spend it as wisely as we can. I think the community center, if we want to use some of that, that's been a strategic goal for years that we wanted to do. And we should knock some of these things out that we've set up years ago that we haven't done also as we move on to newer things. Because we're not meeting our goals if we're not, and so I'd like us to look at those things too and help clean them up and we'll spend it as wisely as we can. And we still need to look at adding additional police officers too, because we're still, we don't have enough, as we grow especially. I think it's a great idea, I just think we need to spend it wisely and I also think we need to watch it because I think. We may be falling back on that money even more if this coronavirus gets more serious. And people are not working again this winter and we may just have to fall back on that to help stop. From people from becoming homeless. So we've got to just be careful with it, but I do want to pick up some of the things that we haven't done, that we put on our strategic plans. Make and clean those up, the you the the uh uh kitchens at the community center is one of them, we've been working on it for years as part of us. Several strategic plans, our ADA, if we started that years ago, there's still some things that need to be cleaned up on that. So we move finish that stuff too and then move into this, the other things too as we get the money.
Ken, I can agree with you on that, however, I want to be cautious about how we use it for any streets and roads or ADA improvements. Because once you use uh funding that's outside of streets and roads, anything from um. Um uh LTF others, uh then you start having a uh in the future duplication or what they call a maintenance of effort. We were caught in that when we had money in our general fund and we didn't have enough in streets and roads, did a project. At the wastewater treatment plant one time and the state is saying, well, that now has to come from your general fund. From now on, if you want any SB one money. So I I I think, yes, we we need to do a lot of our strategic goals, but as we go about it. Making sure that we won't have unintended consequences.
I agree with that, mayor.
And then with the number of police officers, again, as we discussed in two thousand eighteen, it's supply and demand. We may demand a lot, uh let's say four more for the chief and uh chi- uh Sheriff Dursky can say. I don't have this supply, um we're we're just sitting. So um if we truly need additional, they can't be supplied as we talked about in two thousand eighteen. Are there alternatives? And not that I really want to have alternatives, I think that we wait and work with the with the sheriff's department.
Um I agree with you, mayor, because um just a quick point, the city of Modesto had like a hundred some openings for sheriffs and they couldn't even fill those. So um I I think how you're in a sheriff, like you said, is could be a struggle, because they just don't have them.
They're looking for police officers, the sheriff's department's looking for sheriffs.
Well, they're police people.
Gotcha.
Have the same background.
Uh this is Councilmember Barbara Martinez, um and looking at how we can spend that money because it is for the benefit of the public. That's the name of the fund, I still say that we need uh some lights at our dark spots at at our parks. Uh I think we need uh probably some more additional cameras. And um, there's some of our our city-owned buildings need lighting because um, for instance, like over at the scout hall, that place is really dark and uh, it's kind of scary when you go over there, you know, like this time of the year when there's meetings over there. And uh, it's really, really dark. So just more lighting, uh, cameras and take a look at our parks and maybe um, there might be some solar uh, lighting that we might be able to get that will not cost as much as, you know, a PG&E or MID kind of lighting situation. Thanks.
Vice, Vice, go ahead, Sean.
No, no, no. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So just kind of a comment off of what Cal just stated. So we're still kind of going off that old metric for population, the one to one thousand uh, ratio. So maybe this would be a good opportunity uh, to do that CAD and that CAD analysis to see if we are overstapped or understaffed. So just an idea uh, based off what Cal said. And then uh, something that's going to make the mayor smile, so the county's going to be receiving uh, twenty-two million from the feds over the next three years for homelessness. It's going to be the HUD's ESG funds. Of course, it's not guaranteed to us. Um, so I'll, you know, I'll continue to talk with uh, our supervisor Olsen there. Uh, and then when she leaves, whoever picks up after that. Um, but yeah, so I would like, eh, once we've exhausted all avenues, I think this will be a great, you know, eh, as long as we can, as long as the reserves are healthy. I think this will be a a great way to to take care of some of the problems we're s- we're struggling to find uh, funding for, so.
Uh, Mayor, that, those are both really good points. What I'm hearing from the council, since it seems to be a sort of broad range is, you know what? I I think the easiest route to make sure that we have kind of a he- uh, a a tight grip on on the spending of this fund is we'll come up with some amendment language to the to the policy that allows for uh, uh, special community improvement projects, some kind of language like that. Um, and require that those projects have to get explicit approval from the city council. So in other words, each time, um, let's say, let's say, for example, the next meeting, we bring you a request to to provide gap funding for what we need to complete the the community center kitchen remodel. Um, when you receive that request, it'll be for the amount. It'll, well, it will detail what kind of balance we have in that fund and ongoing costs. And you'll be able to make a policy decision each and every time uh, on those funds since they are finite. And as we grow and the cannery project gets into swing, um, I'll work with Maricela on trying to come up with a best practice in terms of how much of the total funding we receive in a year. We allocate to capital, special projects and the remainder stays in reoccurring costs. Um, and we'll bring you some sort of rough guideline. It's going to have to be a living, breathing, amended regularly policy because cannabis businesses are going to come and go. Um, and and their revenues are going to change over time. And so it's going to need to, we're going to need to be flexible with it. But I think we have enough feedback um, for me to put something together that at least will get us where we want to go in the short term.
All right, thank you. Annabelle, are there any public comments on this topic?
There are no public comments.
All right. Um, then we're going to move on to item six point five, consideration of a resolution to support on Proposition Twenty that we, reducing crime and keeping California safe act.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a hard point for this one. Uh, this is brief. So what I'm going to say before I go through my report is um, I did my best uh, based on a lot of information that's out there on Prop Twenty to give you highlights of the proposition. This is by no means a full analysis that, you know, if we had more time, we could spend a lot more time going into every nitty-gritty detail of the proposition. That's not what this presentation is. I think as um, my report said, everybody was encouraged to go read that proposition its entirety online. Uh, for those members of the public that are out there, there's a bunch of resources online. Ballipedia has a pretty good um, overview of both sides of this uh, proposition. But basically, in a nutshell, Prop Twenty is the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act. Uh, the, it's a, we received a request uh, last minute from the League of California Cities, um, which uh, is a sponsor of the proposition. Uh, they wanted a resolution of support. Um, typically, if it's a no-brainer issue on on items that council uh, and the city have traditionally supported, um, sometimes we'll send those or council members will send individual letters of support. In this particular instance, this isn't really something uh, that the council has discussed in the past. And so um, I requested a little time to be able to present this to you uh, because it was a request from the league. So real quickly, um, general details, uh, Prop Twenty attempts to address uh, two urgent costly issues facing California cities. One is violent crime and two is increasing retail theft. It would reclassify some crimes as violent, which are currently clas- classified under nonviolent category. Examples are uh, domestic violence, date rape, sex trafficking of children and assault with a deadly weapon. Um, I'll get to the reason why uh, they want to, aside from the fact that obviously those are violent crimes, why they want to have those reclassified. Um, and then finally, um, it would address uh, certain provisions of Prop Forty-seven, which was passed years ago, which uh, reduced theft uh, under nine hundred fifty dollars to simple misdemeanor. And it would allow certain types of thefts such as firearm theft, fraud and lawful credit card use to be chargeable as either felonies or misdemeanors. There's also some specifics in the bill with regard to DNA collection for certain types of uh, misdemeanors, uh, sexual offenses, um, which are not, is not currently under the, on the books. Um, the, the uh, reclassification of some of these crimes that are currently categorized as nonviolent into violent is essentially uh, to push, put them into a position where if you are um, uh, convicted of a violent offense, um, you have to follow uh, other parole-related criteria, or you have to meet other criteria uh, in order to to uh, achieve parole. In other words, you typically have to complete the entirety of your sentence before you're offered um, uh, parole. And certainly, uh, you you don't get the same allowances for early release. These, these um, categories I just mentioned to you are fall under the nonviolent category. So today, it is uh, possible that that some of these um, offenders would be um, allowed early release or parole uh, in certain situations, or at least to have the opportunity for them. It doesn't mean it would be granted. So um, arguments in favor, um, you know, primarily from a city perspective, the main concern that that I've heard for years now since Prop Forty-seven passed was, is the increase in petty theft and crimes. In some areas, there's some statistics that indicate that those crimes are up by uh, anywhere between five to twenty percent, depending on where you are uh, since that time. And we certainly have experienced it like most communities, um, sort of repeat offenders that are uh, uh, well aware that there's a threshold where they will likely either be cited out or booked into jail and immediately released. Um, and so it has become a problem. What uh, the prop would do is it would allow um, prosecutors the ability to make a decision about whether they charge a theft as a misdemeanor or a felony. So obviously, it leaves a little bit of, quite a bit of discretion with these wobbler offenses to district attorneys. Um, I suspect what you would see was they would, they would identify and look at the criminal history of each individual and make a determination based on the the specifics of the crime as whether they were going to charge as a felony or misdemeanor. Um, it also uh, reclassifies the concerning offenses to violent crimes. We talked about that. And they say that it closes dangerous loopholes that were in some cases inadvertently created by AB one oh nine, Prop Forty-seven and Prop Fifty-seven. Now, the opposition would uh, state, and and one of the opponents is is uh, former Governor Jerry Brown, who was a a proponent of some of these other uh, measures, that it would roll back effective criminal justice reforms that would amount to significant increased incarceration and prison costs. Put simply, if more people are going to be convicted of felonies that are going to have uh, prison sentences, we will likely be spending some more money on incarceration and prison costs, which in turn could force cuts to rehabilitation programs for those exiting prisons, mental health programs, housing, homelessness programs, et cetera. Um, and then um, i- i- in their opinion, um, it could lead to the possibility for extreme felony charges for what still amount as petty crimes. So um, this is a really complicated proposition. There's a lot to it. Um, we could talk for an hour and a half about it. Uh, what I would say for the purposes of the council's discussion this evening is whether the council would like to uh, approve the resolution that's attached to your agenda, which which supports um, Prop Twenty, uh, not approve it or uh, take no position at all. And from, and and keep in mind that, you know, the discussion really should center around the city of Riverbank as an organization's support or not support for the 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 measure. Um, and those are sort of the key issues that I think we just need some council vote on um, so we can move on and and give the league their answer. And uh, happy to answer any questions, although again, I'm not an expert on Prop Twenty. I just have been spending the last couple of weeks reading upon it.
Any council comments, questions? Okay, I?
I'm I'm not sure. This is Councilmember Fossey. I'm not sure that it's, that I'm comfortable with the city making an agreement, uh, an argument for or against. That's just my.
Okay. The um, you can dissent on any of the items. Um, it's not the, it is the city council that's making the recommendation. Just like any other legislative body, you can oppose or you can be in favor. The um, the intent is to correct some of the issues that were issued by the Supreme Court, um, stating that overcrowding was um, whether that inhumane or um, what's the one for unusual punishment? Um, so we had a series of laws and and releases on individuals that were considered uh, not as bad as some of the others that are incarcerated. The biggest issue is that um, child trafficking for sex, that's not violence. That's not a felony right now. And I I don't see how anyone could justify that or domestic vi- violence as being uh, eh, eh, not being a a violent crime. You know, you could do theft with a gun, but that's not violence unless violence happens. The uh, the amount of petty theft that are, is happening, it's not just on a small scale. Uh, Luis, you may have seen it in your, your business. I know I've seen it in mine, where uh, there are individuals stealing for others and getting paid for it uh, for it, whether it is for their drugs or whatever. And although they're not stealing a lot, they're stealing a couple hundred dollars worth of liquor, uh, but they're doing it on a daily basis at the same store or in a uh, around, around the town. So um, is that going to be permissive? Right now, it is permissive. Um, and I I don't think that that is something that we want to say is as permissive. Now, a lot of these are going to be uh, kept in, excuse me, going to be brought into the jail system. But those who are already in the jail system are going to have to complete their sentencing uh, before they're allowed to be released. The uh, the process created by Prop Fifty-seven um, for, what was it, two thousand sixteen, uh, considered releasing inmates that did not complete a lot of their sentencing. And we saw just recently, because COVID is, is in prisons, where we had a lot of prisoners released early, right back into the streets or back into the communities without having um, any train or any evaluation. Uh, although this is not um, part of the evaluation process, it is the beginning of an evaluation process because you don't take it just cartons, you take it individually. And if an individual comes on up and they think they're up for parole, they're denied. They have the right to appeal that parole now under this provision. And they have also automatic rights for the following year, not two years or four years down the road, but the following year to have a uh, a greater defense on why they should be released. Communities should take a stand, one way or the other. And if we're not going to take a stand, one way or the other, then I think that we're doing a disservice to why, you know, we are up here on the dais. Um, I think this is reasonable. This is not going back to um, uh, two thousand eleven. This is just modifying, saying that oops, we made a mistake. For those of you who were around there in the seventies, uh, California went to a very liberal um, pris- prison system. And then they found out in the eighties, that wasn't working. They went back to the system that we had until two thousand eleven. We've changed it. Now we're modifying. We're not going, we're not reverting back. We're just modifying it to make sure that the classifications um, are fit, fit to crime. So um, I believe that this has been a long time coming. The uh, the league, um, I believe the police association, uh, district attorneys have all been pushing for something along these lines over the last couple of years. And I think it is a proposition that we should be behind and support.
Vice Mayor, you're reading here.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's Councilmember Barbara Martinez and I uh, believe that we should support this because in looking at the uh, increase of serial theft and um, organized retail theft, um, how it has gone on the rise and that um, it's been in the news that some people who commit crimes, they they get on, it's six months and they go, they, they get out and they run. I mean, do a crime and go right back in the same day. So it's almost like as if they don't really care about uh, having to do, do the six months. So I think that with this, it reclassifies some of the nonviolent crimes that should be classified as violent crimes. And I agree that um, we should take a stand and be in favor of it.
Okay, Luis?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, so I'll kind of discuss two, two different things, uh, what I agree with and then just kind of areas of concern. Uh, I absolutely agree with the mayor, you know, it appropriately reclassifies violent crimes currently categorized as nonviolent. I think that's, that that needs to be fixed. Uh, Prop Twenty, it creates two new categories, the serial theft. That third offense of the two hundred and fifty or more, uh, would be considered a wobbler and charged appropriately with the three years in the county jail versus the state prison. So I do like, I thi- I think that's appropriate. Uh, the, it, and addresses organized retail theft. Um, the community supervision practices modification on the third incident, incident, I think is appropriate. Uh, DNA collection for forging checks and certain domestic violence crimes, uh, I'm in agreement there. I think just uh, areas of Prop Twenty that aren't really addressed correctly or are just kind of concerns. Um, it will in, it will increase incarceration at a disproportionate rate. Uh, the enhancements used by prosecutors on black and brown residents, uh, it will account for much longer sentences uh, before having a parole hearing. Um, I think, eh, eh, I think uh, the DNA collection for shoplifting, I'm not sure what that looks like. Um, and then as far as Prop uh, Fifty-seven, just kind of rumors I've heard uh, saying that it allows for dangerous people uh, to parole is not true. It only allows those eligible to request parole and that's all that does. Uh, so, in the absence of doing, I mean, this is not a perfect proposition. I think in the absence of doing nothing, I, I would support it.
Luis, on the wobblers, they may or may not be sentenced. It's up to the judge. It's given the judge latitude. And I, I, I hope our pendulum is swinging to start being a, a, a much more judicious in the way we do sentencing on people of color. I'm not trusting it completely, but I hope we start on that a lot, lot sooner. But again, because someone is coming on up with a third time of two hundred and fifty dollars or greater, the judge may consider that still a wobbler and, and not ruled for the, the felony. So there's a lot. And I don't believe in, if I've, if, Sean, did I misread it? I, I don't think I did, that the violence of trafficking, domestic violence, those are, will be considered felonies, correct?
Correct.
They're not a wobbler?
No. I mean, Chief, Chief, you could jump in if you, if you know the answer to that question, but my understanding is if they meet the criteria of the felony, then they're felony.
That's correct. It classifies them as violent versus nonviolent felonies, which is the determination when it comes to parole.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, first of all, Mayor, I agree with you on several of the items that you spoke about. I think by definition, some of the things that they're not considering crimes, i.e. date rape, is not a, a, a violent crime. I don't see how they can classify that as nonviolent crime by the very definition of rape. And I don't think this is a perfect bill, but at the same time, I think it's a start to correct some things that need to be corrected. As Councilmember Darlene Martinez said, people are getting put out of jail and getting right back in. I believe last week, I, I heard, heard on the news, they released several people and two-thirds of them were back in jail two days later. And so we've got some problems there. Now, if we pass this and support it, and I do think that we need to come and stand by it as a city, you know, it can be redone again to, to improve the things that aren't working. But some of the things that are not working now need to be taken care of by this bill also, like the child trafficking and the things like that that you've mentioned. And we need to look at the other things that can be improved as time goes by to make the bill even better.
And as we, as the community moves forward, with our homeless situation, follow-on housing, we can also take a look at some of our other areas as, let's say, we vacate our current buildings temporarily and go elsewhere, and start inviting the county to come in and the mental health issues, provide them with the building, that's what they need more than anything else. And some of the other services that help for those who have anger issues, marital problems, financial issues, to have the county coming on in and give them the helping hands that they need. So this is not just a standalone alone, although that's how we're debating it tonight. There's a lot of other tentacles that are incorporated, not only in this bill, but in our goal as a city that, as we move forward. Okay, Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there are no public comments.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Prop, the resolution supporting Proposition twenty?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the Proposition twenty as it's so stated for the League by, by the League of Cities.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution supporting Proposition twenty by Councilmember Campbell and a second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I know that's a tough decision on all of our parts, but thank you, Sean, thank you. And Chief, thank you for what you do. Okay, as we move forward to comments, staff comments on seven point one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just two items this evening. One is that if you just so happen to be driving eastbound into town on our west side of city limits or you're heading out of town, take a look at our monument that's on the south side of the highway and you'll see that our new electronic sign, this one is the one that the city owns and operates solely, is up and operational as of just this afternoon. There's a little extra painting that we got to do to clean up the monument, but it's up, operational. We're going to be starting to add in community messaging. Be getting trained on all of the work, uh, media equipment associated with it. So we're very, very excited. Big thank you to council for funding that project. We think it looks fantastic. And so go check it out, especially at nighttime, apparently it looks really good. Secondly, I just want to mention something because, you know, we, council does a lot at every single council meeting and sometimes we roll through pretty major decisions that we've been working on for so long. I just want to mention, take one second to mention and thank the staff and council on, specifically on the cannery project. There will be additional cannery-related work to do. There's probably amendments to the specific plan that are going to need to take place out there. But that cannery has been closed for a long time and many, many different city councils and staff people have worked on trying to get something to replace it since the, since the business closed. And tonight is really the first time that a viable option has actually been approved and will revitalize that location. So I just think that taking a second to appreciate that is important because we'll move on to other items, you know, shortly, but it's a pretty big deal, something that I know I've been working on with the rest of staff here for three or four years now. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Any other staff comments? No further staff comments. I think Sean set them up. All right. Going on to council comments, Councilmember Fosse, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations, we're in the red. Woo! Which to me seems weird because red means bad, but red means good when you think about COVID. So congratulations, everybody, for making sure that you're doing what your part is to protect everybody. And let's continue to do that work so that we can move forward and get our schools open for our kids to go back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Campbell? Cal, you're muted.
Sorry. I want to go along with what Councilmember Fosse just said. It's good to be out of the red, eh, into the red. But I personally feel that there's some rough times ahead of us with this coronavirus because it gets better and more affluent in the winter time when it's cold. So keep encouraging people to wear the mask, keep encouraging people to keep the social distance. I know we're all tired of it, I know it gets old, but city, eh, in Europe, they're starting to spike. Some of the states are starting to spike and as the weather gets worse. I don't want to see us, you know, go down. So let's hang in there and keep encouraging everybody to hang in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Uh, the League of Women Voters of Stanislaus County prepared a webinar that explains all of the ballots, the pros and the opposition in detail. So if you need more information, there, you can go to their email, which is L W V Stanislaus at gmail dot com. Or you can visit their website, W W W dot L W V Stanislaus, Stanislaus dot org. And I attended a water education webinar about water contamination in the Central Valley. And they're going to be following up and giving us more information as they go through all of the cities that could be affected by the contamination of water. And I really enjoyed the educational, the virtual educational sessions that we had of, that were given to us by the League of California Cities last week. And I have free COVID nineteen testing sites. El Remolito, or El Remotito, I guess it is, at the Fleet Market on Crow's Landing, October sixteenth and October seventeenth, from ten to four P M, both days. And at the Stanislaus County Library on I Street, October eighteenth, from ten to four. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so just a quick update on the League of California Cities, since I was the voting member. Uh, so the result, it did pass, but there was no quorum, so it was just an advisory. Um, I want to thank Sean and Maricela for the, for attending a meeting yesterday that we had with the Housing Authority, with Barbara and Teresa. It was a great way to just, kind of just brainstorm ideas, keep the talks going about affordable housing and transitional housing. Uh, tomorrow, the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance meeting is at five thirty. It is open to the public if anybody would like to attend. Um, I'll also be taking a tour of the sixteen twelve workforce project, uh, the Old Clarion Hotel tomorrow. Uh, and then finally, the, the county's outreach team will be at Scout Hall again this Friday at eight thirty A M. So if you know anybody that's, uh, that needs, needs assistance, needs, needs someone to talk to suffering from homelessness, uh, please send them out to Scout Hall, I'll be, I'll be there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question, Darlene. Your water contamination from the Central Valley, was that provided by U S E P A nine?
No, that was by the Well Organization.
Okay. Thank you. I have no comments. I have too many meetings to go through the comment. And that's what Sean does to me. All right. We're going into closed session, consistent of item eight point one, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five seven Bravo one, titled Public Works Director, Interim L R A Director. Item eight point two, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, pursuant to Government Code five four nine five six point nine Alpha. Name of Case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District. First of the City of Riverbank and D O E S one dash twenty. Stanislaus County Superior Court, Case Number Charlie Victor one nine zero zero four four zero two. Item eight point three, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five six point eight. Property A P N zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five through zero zero seven. Agency Negotiator, Sean Scully, City Manager, Property Negotiator, Admetus, Inc., under negotiation price, term of payment or both. Item eight point four, Threat to Public Services or Facilities, pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven, Consultation with City of Riverbank Director of Emergency Services. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. The public portion of this meeting has concluded. The city council and L R A board will go into closed session. The report on closed session items will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Anyone interested in receiving what was reported on the items may contact the city clerk by calling two oh nine eight six three seven one nine eight or email cityclerk at riverbank dot org. Next open meeting is on Tuesday, October twenty seventh at six P M. We are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you and good night.